You are watching Access to LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 20th meeting of the Trail Creek Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting at www accesseslaporte county.org.
If I could have you stand to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the June meeting.
The year's over.
I can't believe it.
Absolutely.
It's so fast. We will open this month's meeting with approval of the minutes from May. Does everyone have a chance to read through those? And any corrections or...
I have a correction.
You do?
Yeah, my name is Ken Haas.
I've done it because the system likes you being a boss.
You don't know how many times I've been called that.
Josh, may I borrow your pen? It's on the table. Thank you. Thank you. Any other corrections or comments?
Oops, sorry.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from May?
Motion.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the fund report. Any questions or comments there? Josh, I didn't see anything that stuck out as odd to me, so... Unless anyone else in the council has questions or comments in the fund report? Do we have a motion to approve the fund report?
Comment to motion to approve the fund report.
Thank you.
Representative?
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sharon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Moving on to payment of the bills. And again, any questions or comments from the council?
Just, I have maybe a question. Zoom meetings, do we still have Zoom meetings and...
I still pay for it annually because something just had its way. And we actually have used it this year with the MS4.
Oh, okay.
We have.
And I anticipate once we upgrade our facilities here that we'll...
That we may be able to use that again. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to pay the bills for May 2023.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Josh, do we have any correspondence? Moving on to reports. MS4 and our attorney, we kind of are going to run together a little bit. So Chris, I'll let you give the MS4 report and then move on to yours.
MS4, happy, I guess, to inform you that things are moving along and Shem and Lo were doing a good job of getting things in order. Jenny and I met with Shem and one of his associates to discuss the game plan and I believe before you tonight, you have the Part B of the application process, which essentially needs to be considered and authorized Jenny to sign. And what that does is put us, it's a required step, and what that does is put them in a position to then in September...
We got that one, yeah.
Get Part B?
Yeah.
That's cool. That was what the, he sent that in an email. So it really is the application, so we need to have authorizations for that to be signed. And what that does is Shem can send that in to IDEM and then that sets us up for the auditor review, which he's planning around September. So they made a lot of headway, I think they were able to use, which is good news for you, and a cost standpoint, some work that Mr. Doyle's office did and so able to identify some things and saves a lot of fieldwork. So that's the status, but yeah, ultimately, I'll look for that real quick.
Sure, sure. For August, September?
That is the initial plan. The good news is we're in good standing with IDEM and I forget her name.
And IDEM, Stacy.
Stacy, yes. She was here locally reviewing another town and starting that process, but the town, I'm confident to say is it's in a bad position now. And I believe that we have confirmation that she's satisfied that things are moving along and the plan is coming along. And then as we move forward, there will be some more discussion in the coming months before year end. We're going to need to adopt an ordinance, which is required, and as well as discuss some other plans for the education outreach, those kinds of things. So it's moving along and I think ultimately money well spent.
I would agree. And even since the meeting, I've been in contact with one of his associates, just trying to get things finalized for that application process that we can be ready to send Part B, as soon as we have authorization from council for me to sign, so.
So I have, I do have this Part B from Shem. And again, it's just a section of the application process, which is the status of progress. So that you need to authorize as Shem finalizes these, that Jenny can sign that so that it can be sent to IDEM.
So we need a motion. Don't everybody jump at once. This is something that's actually required so that we can obtain grants and have a stormwater program.
So what's the proper terminology? Right. The motion would be to authorize Jenny to sign on behalf of the council the Part B related application documents for MS4. Knowing a motion, so.
Thank you. A second?
I second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll look forward there. Now we'll move on to your report.
My duties this month focused on Evergreen Plaza. I think that we made some progress and Warren and Marshall were included on the correspondence. The owner, as well as his proxy manager, I think were more responsive than I think probably having the owner and Lo as well help that process along. It seems, and I may be wrong, or maybe Warren was above this, that maybe one of the buildings in question may have been sold or part of that property during this process, so we may need to keep an eye on that and see if that's so, making sure the new one. Unless I'm wrong, it seemed like we had some progress, some commitments, and at least a plan of why things aren't done and when they will be and there's some timing elements, but I thought that they were moving along. I know there's, we just need to keep an eye on it.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we just might connect with him at least once a month and see how his, what his plans are, but yeah, it was a positive response.
Great. Thank you.
Then the other one is the research on the drainage ditches. I need a little more authorization from you. We've done some research with both some deeds, went back to 94 without spending the town's money blindly with the recorder's office. We did find a deed that initially went to the Pritzes, for instance, the old Cores Pritz they own along that, and it isn't clear. So just need your authorization to pull. There's a deed from 94 that has approximately seven different easement documents listed in it that may or may not apply to the town. So I just wanted to report that we finally found a deed that discussed them, but there isn't anything that points that directly the town is responsible or it's in favor of the town. So we're having those pulled as long as that's okay with you.
So do you want a motion for us to...
Yeah, I think ultimately that would be appropriate. I just didn't dive in and spend, you know, I mean it's...
What do you think the cost will be before we make the motion? Or before we give authorization?
I wonder at most. I don't think it'll be that much. That would be pretty, I don't think it'll be that much. I don't know how many pages they are.
Okay, so we need a motion to authorize our attorney to pull the documents related to the additions.
I'll make the motion to allow Attorney Christopher Willoughby to access the documents for the Tower of Trail Creek to investigate the Evergreen Plaza records.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then lastly, I don't know if you want me to address Harding and go into that later.
Yes, please.
So I really haven't been involved. I saw, read an update today from building commissioner and or building inspector, and so ultimately I think they need to probably authorize me to follow up. I don't know if you want me to come back and report to you what the process and the options and, I mean, finding out who the owner is. And this is, I haven't been on this, this is only the year or two for me, so I know this is a longstanding issue.
Right. So part of this is we need to find out who actually owns the property. To the best of our knowledge, most of the house is owned by one person and like about a couple of feet and a sign line are owned by another person. And I'm not sure why when part was sold, it wasn't all of it, unless it wasn't recorded properly.
Are we sure that somebody owns portions of the house or it's just sitting on someone else's?
No, it's actually portions. It's the dividing line of the property goes right down the middle. Not down the middle, but down inside of the house.
Well, if the dividing line goes down, for instance, that doesn't mean someone doesn't own the house. It just might mean that one is encroaching on the other.
Okay, so however it has to be. If you could investigate that, my motion would be to allow Chris to investigate that along with the process of demolition for that property. So we need someone to authorize that motion and then we'll need a second.
I'll authorize that motion.
And before you go further, maybe in between that time, appropriate to send them a letter that says, listen, the town is considering moving forward so that maybe we get a response before the next. Finding out who the owner is is the easy part, but sending some correspondence and hope that we get some...
So we have done that in the past, done it for a few years. I don't know what the statute of limitations is there, but we never received any correspondence to the best of my knowledge.
But I think if we put the demolition aspect out there and move forward with that, and you might not, but at least you've reached out and you may get their attention before we start. Because the next process will be that we'll be ordering title work and sending out notices and going through that process and having a public hearing.
Right, because Chris is right.
Is that through our bill?
State that we have to go through a process with the building commissioner, state the owner.
I didn't know if we could use what we have before or not. That was kind of where I was thinking we could save ourselves a little money, but...
I don't think that's completely...
So if anyone would like to complete and make that motion to authorize...
So there's a motion that was already made?
I can't, well, it was Warren's motion, yes. But we need to amend that to include the second portion.
Amended.
Thank you.
And I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. Just for the immediate concerns of the residents around. Is it boarded up 100%?
So the home is boarded.
Can it get boarded up?
And there are now some small holes that rodents and, you know, they have to have made, so they'll have...
Put it serious.
We'll have Mr. Thomas go ahead and do that.
It's not secure?
No.
No.
They'll have Steve go ahead and do that.
I mean, because, yeah.
I'd just like to make one comment also on this property. It seems like, you know, as I mentioned in our little discussion earlier, this property has been authoritative aside for a long time. It seems like we're just kicking this can down the road with letters and nothing ever happens. So we need to have some, I don't know if litigation is the right word, but something that has some teeth to it where the owners, you know, they either have to, you know, is the property even rehabable? If not, you know, we need to, we need to take the steps to either get the property rehabbed or get the property tore down because, you know, it's not fair to the residents who live next to that property. I don't think any one of us up here or anybody out there would be happy if that house was next to your house, so...
I think this is just the first of a few, we'll go through this process, but...
Yeah, okay.
Nice to hear, we'll see some action.
I just want to not keep kicking this can down the road. Something needs to happen.
Fantastic to say that we're finally going to see some action moving forward and that we'll actually be able to do something with this. This has been proclaimed a lot since before, I need at least, with the exception of Warren, maybe we're on the council. Okay. Anything else for you, Mr. Willoughby?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Haas and Associates.
I don't see the CCMG anywhere else on the Jenny side, so I assume we're going to do that here.
We can do that here.
Okay. Yeah, two bits for the crossing match project. It's a traditional, it's the Johnny Carson, you gotta rip it.
Yeah, right.
Do you want to read my handbook manual?
Oh, yeah.
It's okay to just hear.
Okay, this one is from Milestone. Do I need to go through the whole checklist of 496? Or I can just read the top number?
Read the number.
And then you will do our due diligence and write in your work for the next week. Do the tally. Go to deep. Just a little bit. Quite a heavy weapon, too. All right. Milestone has a bid of $313,104.56. That's 313,104.56. And there is a copy. Sam will take the copy, leave the original here, and he'll investigate all the requirements and check the math.
There, I can put that back. Is there a Josh link?
Would've been nice if they ripped this one open, too. That's from Reeve Riley. Yep, this is Reeve Riley. Start from the back this time. And you'll miss it this way, too.
It's okay, just build suspense for all of us.
My handbook manual isn't making any sense. It's gotta be here somewhere.
Maybe it's close to the front.
That's what I was gonna say, this is gonna be right.
It's covered page.
It's zero. It's stuck away in the front section, sorry.
There we go.
Okay, Reeve Riley bids $314,226.34. That's 314,226.34.
Okay. And so you'll go through and make sure everything is, all the requirements are met before we make the decision, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's amazing. I'll post there. Just a tiny copy. Little original, let's see. Sam, did you want to take these?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates from the engineer's office?
I don't think so. We did have that Cool Spring and Risky drainage issue. We did find a set of plans for the Cool Spring improvements that stops just as they get to Risky, so it does not show the existing sewer system that's in the ground at the time that they did that, that work. So we sent a guy out there to pop open some manhole lids and take a look and see, and we do have an idea where it goes, and it does connect to the storm sewer system, the new one on Cool Spring. So that all heads out west and dumps into the ditch out that way. So there's 222 feet between Mrs. Farrell's property and the manhole that those storm sewers next in her yard connect to the Cool Spring system. So I'm not sure when it got done, it's not showing on those plans, so maybe it was a change order or maybe it was a separate project. I don't know how that sewer got in the ground. You can tell that it's newer pipe. There's an old clay one that hits north that probably went to an inlet that somehow got taken out, that is no longer in use, so.
So the one that's on the west side of her house, that's between her house and that parking lot, and it has that little bulkhead there where the eight-inch liner...
Yeah, there's an eight-inch liner going in.
Yeah, there goes... Should we know for sure that that's clear from that point?
We don't know if that whole system is clear. We have to send a camera through there and take a look and see if there's any blockages or collapses or anything else that could be impeded and flow out of there.
So then would that be our, is that choker?
That was gonna be my next question. Was that belong to...
If you ask the Michigan City Sanitary District, they're gonna say it's not their problem. They've already said that. Already wrote a letter saying that. So I'm sure Chris could probably put up an argument saying that this is your problem.
Do you know where the, our line is?
Yeah. What, the town line or sewer?
Yes.
No, town.
Yeah. The town line runs, our guy found a pin up at Cool Spring and one at the rear of the property, and at the rear of the property, the pin is in the west bank, which means the ditch is totally on Mrs. Farrell's property. When you come up north, the line is in the west bank. So the center line of those systems are on her property. So they're in trouble.
They are in trouble.
Okay. Explaining what we want, um, so then you're saying the next thing, is the next thing is the camera?
I would say internal TV inspection to find out if there's any blockages or...
Technically, it is all, it should be a straight shot hit, right? There shouldn't be any dog levers ran there.
Well, the thing is, you know, the ditch and the eight-inch pipe goes north, ties into a structure that's about 20 feet south of the edge of the road, makes a 90-degree bend, goes west, has a 12-inch PEC, goes 222 feet to another structure, then it turns north again and ties into an inlet, and it has a curved inlet.
So say hypothetically, if we go with camera and let's see if we just find that it's open, then it's just a matter of that's, it's closed and we're done, or what else we can do?
The only thing you could do would be replace it with a bigger pipe, but that's not going to work because it ties into a 12-inch.
Right.
Right. It's not that, it's not a problem.
So we're stuck with that size.
Because I know I went out there after a meeting last month and took a look at it, like, oh, it's like, surprised anything would actually go through it because it's like a chicken wire or whatever they got on the screen.
It's covered.
And you got all the sticks and... Maybe a baseball might get through it, but, you know, it's gotta be...
Well, that's what the camera will tell us. If all, yeah, some of those sticks and twigs and leaves and stuff did get through that grate, and then there's two 90-degree bends in the system, that's something to catch something there.
Oh, yeah, that'll slow down.
It could be a debris catcher or it could be there and it's just too small.
Right. So if we have a camera, recommend if you have a camera, who would do that and how much?
Well, Dean does it around here. Ask them for a price.
They could, they also, they send that to Ripley and with the camera, but they have, they can jet it out while they're doing it.
Well, usually you have to jet in order to drive the camera through the...
Yeah.
You want a camera to get caught and stuck inside there. Guys would reconsider cleaning that line out before. As I said earlier, in all the years that she's lived there, the Michigan City Sanitary District has been the one to maintain that line, and now they're safe.
Do they have the cons from that line? Because somebody has to have those somewhere.
We asked Warren, the owners we found were the Cool Spring Avenue Improvement Pans.
And that was their improvement, though, that they had?
We're gonna have to subpoena. Loping those records.
Maybe before, maybe you authorize if necessary, because I can, I can, for them to maybe use my contacts and phone call them just to see if there's anything and compare the correspondence. I haven't seen that letter or anything to them, so maybe share that and then I can follow up with the district myself.
Yeah, I can send you that. It's from several years ago.
Yes.
I think they would rather do that before we spend too much money on cleaning up the line ourselves and then we're taking out the responsibility otherwise. Bump one?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not for Cus. Mr. Cus isn't there. I don't know. All right, from 2020.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll be yours to...
Should we maybe also send the owner, the owner just a follow-up letter, just let her know, free?
If you would.
Yeah, and I can just copy her whatever I sent to the district so she knows that you're...
That would be great. And that way she knows we're actually working on the plan.
Thanks.
Thank you, Warren. Okay, anything else?
I think that's all for me.
Okay. I'll give the Park Department report because we have not yet met, although I do know that, I know you're still interested in being liaison, we do have one park board, actually two park board members who are so interested. We have, as of right now, two spots open, but we do have a person who's looking at joining the park board, and it's on our agenda for later on in the meeting tonight. So then we'll be scheduling a meeting shortly thereafter, but if anyone knows one more person who would be interested in joining the park board, we would be interested in entertaining that, that person's name, not looking at anyone specific in the audience. Okay, moving on to our building inspector, he did send a brief report on 110 Harding. Again, just the safety issues we have to address, and so we'll have him follow up and do the boarding up of that property and then he'll follow up with the rest of that. Chris, then we'll be set there. Anything for planning and zoning? Don't forget that.
I might have an update. I'm sorry, just based on Pete's inquiry last, last month about the Woodruff project, I since last month, I've had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Woodruff and with Michigan City adopting their new requirements with regard to remounting, remaster, it's not a big hurdle, but there's some things that he needs to do with the district here in the city and with Mr. Doyle's passing, those final plans, just making sure that they're in compliance. So it's moving forward. We did have that discussion, is intention is to still move forward.
All right, good.
There's a quick question on 110. I'm assuming all the utilities are off on that place, water, I don't know if it's hooked up to the city, water or oil, water?
I think it does, it's well, not 100% sure there.
I just wanted to...
But I do believe they turned off. I believe they are. I don't think they've been connected for many years.
Yeah, I think so.
It would hope not. Okay, moving on to the police department. Our Tom Marshall was unable to attend the meeting this evening, however, did send a report. He wanted to start off by sending his most sincere condolences on behalf of the town to the family of our former county marshal, Skip Pierce, who served our town for over 30 years. We want to thank Skip and his family for their commitment to our community. May he rest in peace. So if we could just take a moment of silence to remember Marshall Pierce. So if we could just take a moment of silence to remember Marshall Pierce. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, Jason Speakman will report to the academy for eight weeks of training beginning on Monday. Steve already has coverage in place for his shifts using part-time officers. With the baseball season in full swing, Steve said that he's only had a few incidents regarding parking during the season this year. He's only had to issue one ticket, but a few warnings thereafter. And then three grass violations were issued within the last few weeks. Two of those fines have been paid with the third remaining outstanding and he'll do some follow up there. And of course, any other questions that we have for Steve, he's happy to address. You can just contact him directly. Moving on to our street department report. Joe also was not able to be here this evening, but did send a report. Council members, you should have that in front of you. He's got dump truck number 34 out for a repair and refresh. The quote that he has so far, this is for number two that's down here or is this number one? Looks like the quote to do the repairs for dump truck number 34 are totaling $4,701.25. This is to do repairs in the underbelly and plow blade, repair any emergency lights that are out, repaint the steps and any corrective other issues that are found. This truck had damage to the belly blade system at some point. The manufacturer of the unit did not survive COVID, so they have to make the parts actually to repair it. Along with this, there's $2,500 in work done to redo the leaf machine through Peters and Marsky. The pivot point on the bed of the lifting cylinder is broken and has to be repaired before its use for this fall. And since the leaf machine is already undergoing repairs, we do need to make a motion to approve the repair and refresh quote for dump truck number 34. So we made a motion to approve that expenditure of $4,701.21 for the repair and refresh, or 25 cents. So $4,701.25.
Is that in his budget or no?
Joshlyn?
Yes.
It is?
I believe so, because he does.
We built it in Marsky.
That he could have.
I will make the motion to approve the repairs to dump truck number 34 for $4,701.25.
One fourth second?
I'll second it.
We'll give it to Sharon. Thank you very much, Sharon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes, so Joe can get his dump truck number 34 repaired and refreshed. And I believe that's all we have for the street department at this time. Anything for ADA?
ADA is Mr. Guel, I know he's working on the plans for both parks. And he probably has it very, very close to being done. He said he had it done by today, but I need to contact him. So that's, that's ADA Mike. In addition to that, my town sign, I talked to, or email a school teacher that's gonna be responsible for this. But it will be starting in September when the kids are back. And there are, he said that they are excited to help us out.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I'm at, if we have anybody actually has an idea, thoughts, what they want changed, added, modified, the sign, you know, start thinking.
You're talking the town entrance signs, just to remind everyone, so.
Cause I'll probably start, just, it was just me, I just started laying it out and let you guys look at it. And I'll have some research on maybe its past history, little things.
That's a great idea.
But just throwing it out there, okay?
Okay. Any comments or questions?
I would kinda like to see something happen with the signs that are there now because they're pretty dilapidated.
Yeah.
Right, and that's part of this project.
Right.
Yeah. But, and Joe brought it up a couple of months ago. And that's where I got ahold of the school and where we're at today. Yeah, and it's, next year, next year is our 100.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the target.
Would it be nice if we could put like the established date at the bottom too? So people know how, you know, the history or a little bit of history of the town.
Yep, all that.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Well, thank you. How about Mercy? Okay. Moving on, we'll go through all business. So we've got the town hall remodel and bid proposal first up on the.
That's only on the agenda to let y'all know that then I should have taken it off. But we're gonna open those bids at the July meeting. Just to give contractors enough time. We have had several contractors come through the office to look at, you know, what needs to be done according to plans.
Okay.
You open July meeting?
Yes.
How many contractors have we had come through? Just two?
Two, but they bring like 20 of their.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, alright. So we're awarding at the July meeting, I mean, opening at the July meeting, awarding on the 27th? We just talked about this.
We did.
I think you're, that's the season.
Yeah, that's the June 27th.
That's the baby. And you're taking them.
No, July 27th is what I was talking about.
Well, it's June 27th meeting. We do?
We do.
So you guys can take it out of your advisement in July and then decide.
Okay.
We have a special meeting.
Then you'll have to do a special meeting to award that piece. Okay. Moving on to the Pritz Park sign. I did talk to Steve Dick. He and I are working with a local vendor to get that brought to fruition. We're going to match it to the color of the Ollie's Bark Park sign, so it's consistent. But the Pritz Park sign, we were thinking it'd be a larger sign that would be in the forefront there. And then we'd also like to put one on the side of Evergreen Plaza that says Pritz Park entrance off of, you know, with the arrow, I think it's, is it Redwood that's right there? So that it would direct people to the correct entrance instead of having them enter through Evergreen Plaza, where they're not really technically supposed to park to enter the park. So, so instead of just one sign, it would actually be two, identical in size, but directing people to the correct parking area and entry of the park. So hopefully that will be finished by our next meeting and we can have that installed and ready to go. The next item we have for old business is the training reimbursement for the police department. And this would be in regards to the crisis intervention training that Steve completed, where we had a check that was sent. Initially, we thought that it was to pay Steve's salary for that time. We've since received some clarification from the state board of accounts. It says that was actually to reimburse us for funds to cover the shifts or the officers that worked in place of our town marshal during the time that he was at that training. So we need to kind of step backwards a little bit. I know that we authorized that, that payment to be made to him. However, the state board of accounts has since corrected our motion and told us that that wasn't what the intent was for that, that fund and that money that was reimbursed to the town. That that actually was meant to cover the shifts of the officers who worked in his place. We also need to return the vacation days that he took to his vacation bank. So we will, unless anyone has any comments or questions about that, we'll need a motion to rescind that authorization for payment and then to redirect that fund accordingly. And that would go, is it, go back to his budget then?
It goes into our law enforcement continuing education, which he continues to use for tracking for all of his guys.
Perfect. Okay. So we need a motion for that, that check to go towards the law enforcement continuing education fund? And then to refund the vacation days back into Marshall Dick's vacation time bank?
That's a, that's a lot to try to remember.
Yeah.
It is a lot. And you can make more than one motion, so.
Absolutely.
That's right. There can be more than one motion that we vote on it, that makes it easier.
So I moved to rescind our previous proposal.
Payment authorization.
Payment authorization to Marshall Dick for his attendance of the training.
The CIT training.
The CIT training. And then to also reimburse him for his vacation days that he took during that time and to have that money put into the.
Law enforcement continuing education.
Law enforcement continuing education fund.
Well done, Mr. bizarre. We need a second for that motion.
Okay.
Lauren, Sharon, whoever. Co-seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Well, I, is there a courtesy?
Yes.
Has anybody sat down, talked?
I have, I have talked to Steve.
Alright, so he's on it?
He understands the reasoning for that, but correct.
Alright, that's fine. Just bring it on.
Yes, he, I did, I did speak with him a while ago, right after the last meeting, actually, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
His vacation days are reimbursed to him.
Yeah, so, yes, so he can take those hopefully through the end, before the end of the year and hopefully that won't be an issue, so. Moving on to new business, just to keep the meeting moving, we've already just, ditches at Evergreen Plaza.
That's, was, what you?
We don't have any further update beyond what you already have, so that's good. So Joshlyn, do you have the information for the new park board member?
Yes, her name is Janelle Andre.
I'm sorry, we need to step back to the ditches at Evergreen Plaza.
My question, which was coming for the, our street department, but on the maintenance of that ditch. One, we're trying to conclude, right, on who's responsible for the maintenance.
That's right.
Correct. Okay. Cause, and I'm going back some years, of course, but I thought there was a, I thought our street department, I thought they had purchased a, I call it a bush hog attachment that connects to their backhoe.
Yes.
Yes.
For that purpose.
Yes, it was an articulating arm.
Yeah.
And it turns out it just wasn't long enough.
Okay.
So.
Exactly. So it can do part of the job, but it can't do the entire job.
Correct.
So there was something, so back then, we had somehow established that we were gonna take care of.
I don't know if we were doing the entire ditch or if there was just a portion, that's the part I think we're unclear on.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just, okay, so, so we don't have a attachment anymore?
No, I believe we still have it.
It's just not.
For detailed information of why it didn't work, I obviously go to Joe.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm not, I'm not the person, but I do recall that we purchased it specifically for the ditch and it just isn't, the arm of it just isn't long enough to cover the wide span of the ditch.
Okay. Okay. I just checked my memory.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to the park board member.
Okay. Her name is Janelle Andrea Andre. And she happened to call for another reason and we got started talking about the parks. Her concern was the dog park and the fence was kind of lifting from the ground and the dogs in each park were kind of getting at each other. But since, since then, Joe has had that repaired or will be repaired next week. But in our conversation, I did offer her, we do have a vacant seat on the park board, in which then she of course agreed. So I'd like to get a motion to add her to the board so we can get a park needed.
So we'll need to make the motion to add.
I will make that motion to add Janelle Andre as the new park board member.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing unopposed, the motion passes. Okay. So if you'll give me your phone number, I'll get that scheduled this week and we'll be ready to go. Any public comments this evening? So if you'll approach the podium, introduce yourself and state your address or the address of the property of interest and we'll go from there.
Hello, my name is Kevin. I'm here with Gamizelle Services. And we're looking at purchasing the old FOP property for one with Johnson Avenue. For Johnson Road. And we have a proposed building that we would like to put out there and propose use to the property. We have not had plans drawn yet, so the proposal, proposed building that we do have is more of a, like a mock-up drawing that I brought. And I wasn't really sure what to expect when coming to address the town. I know there's some issues with possible septic through the health department. So the building would be more contractor storage than anything. So possibly no plumbing on site if we were not allowed to have a septic. The other option was to petition Michigan City sanitation to extend the sewer system from, I believe it was Yankee and Cool Spring all the way up Cool Spring to Johnson. And we're not sure how well that will or won't work. It probably won't, but it was a thought.
It is a thought.
The other thought is an engineered design for a septic system there, a mom system and or another engineered solution to it. We don't necessarily need plumbing on site for the building that we want to put up. The tenants that would be there would be my, my company and then a nonprofit that does, I don't know if you guys have ever heard, Kind Hub in Chicago. It's, it's a building where they have 3D printers and CNC machines and welding equipment. It's for people who want to prototype their own designs and kids that wanna learn how to weld or learn how to use CNC machine and stuff like that. You pay a small membership fee and you have access to all the tools and certified welding instructors and things like that. So that would be one of the other tenants that would be there. And then one more empty space for, you know, pot, potential rent, too.
So how large is the building that you're proposing?
If I can approach and hand you guys these, I haven't had a few of them. We're looking at probably 120 would be the length of it. And, um, we've got a couple more here. Now, this is the layout of the actual property itself. It's actually three lots. I don't know if you guys knew that already. It's three lots and it is all owned by the same, you know, nonprofit. So we would be looking to unsubdivide it if it was even necessary to do, to do that. And then petition the army corps of engineers if necessary to actually deepen the pond that worked with the satellite energy show that's there. And then put a trail back in and around that area. Cause the acreage that we would need to use would only come out at a good 26 acres. It's a five acre parcel, so it's all trees and, you know, that land is back there, it's pretty low lying. So the plan was to clean that up, deepen the pond back there, put a trail and, you know, just for, you know, either public use or I know the DNR owns the property directly behind it. That brings you to Trail Creek.
I'm not gonna ask you for.
So we figured if there was a trail there and some extra parking for people to hike back and fish and, you know, just extra, extra space.
Okay. So my, I'm gonna ask the question before we go too much further. In order to change the footprint that's already there from the current building, because it appears that you would be changing from that existing footprint. What are the steps that we would need for Mr. O'Hare to take?
First of all, it's wrong before, it's before the wrong body.
That needs to go before the planning.
So you need to, I would suggest that you deal with the building inspector, building commissioner. We called them and they said they come in to. Mr. Thomas, well, this is not the right body to bring it up here. Well, the discussion, this body isn't the one that has authority to deal with it. So the building, and my point in having that start is familiarity. It's up to you to know what the zoning is and what's allowed there or it isn't. And then if there are any variances are needed, it needs to go before the BCA. If there's some subdividing or other things, that needs to go before the plant commission. So there are processes, unfortunately, other than discussing it conceptually and checking the polls of the town council, this isn't the body that has any authority with regard to anything here.
And that's right. I kind of figured this, this is a by a contractor, so it's my first time building something like this. I was surprised when she said that you would need to bring it before the, the time on the 20th at 7:00 PM. I said, okay, well, you know, if that's the way it works, we'll go ahead and do it. As far as zoning, I think it is zoned appropriately. It is zoned for commercial where the restaurant is at. I'm not sure the other piece with that is zoned that, there's a two acre like parking lot there. The county has that zoned, that's residential, I believe.
Well, the county, that's just for tax purposes, what you're acting at for beacon. So that really doesn't reflect, these matters here will help you out on that.
Okay.
So starting point, you may be, you may not need anybody's permission to do anything other than filing an application for your permits. So you may be okay as it is, but this isn't proper by.
I think the permission was more along the lines of if we couldn't put in a septic to have a building there without plumbing.
Well, that's gonna be up to the county, and then it's gonna be up to what the town code says of what's required, so.
Hope that is all I can do. Thank you very much.
Conceptually, I could tell you that you were saying about the trail, just on conception, that it used to be the hill that's going down on the, on the south side of that property, that used to be wide open and was a sledding run a long time ago when I was a kid. And then the pond down there was an ice skating area, it was deep enough then.
Makes sense for the trail.
Yeah, the trail would go, that hill would take you all the way back to the creek, and it was, and the reason I'm saying that was my slum grounds. Back in the day, it was really popular.
We would definitely be open to bringing it back to that.
But your septic is gonna be your challenge.
Yeah.
There's probably a way there, just, people won't be able to get a drink filter or anything, but maybe some options like a tank or something like you do at the beach.
That's what we were thinking. It's not gonna need showers and stuff like that. At any one given time, there will be more than five people in, in any of the offices and shower space there. Possibly the, the non-for-profit, I don't know, to have more, maybe ten, fifteen people in at a time. But the one that we go to in Chicago hardly ever has more than two people in the middle of the head of the city.
Good answer. What do you guys do?
We're a contractor. I'm actually likely to bet on the next one that you guys have coming up. I, I didn't know that you guys had work out for a bit.
Yeah.
So I wrote all that down as the meeting was going on. I do subwork off of three divided as well, so.
Okay.
I'll see what we're setting, I mean, the stuff that they have here, so.
And if you have neighbors to your north will have to also be part of it, and so.
Right.
Right.
Well, thank you guys very much.
Thank you for, for presenting the information.
Yes.
That's all right, we'll just put this here. Thank you very much. Anything from the clerk's office tonight?
Do you have any public comment?
Yes.
I don't know, wait, is, is there any more public comment this evening? Because some of the public is very quiet in their seats. No?
I'll wait for it.
Taking you down.
Wait for the stand-up, can you?
Thank you. Come on, clerk's office.
Training, State Board of Accounts training, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eighth of June. So I will be attending that in Fort Wayne.
So if we have a meeting on the twenty-seventh, is that can interfere with here?
It is for me, I will not be here, but there are keys that remind me to give you.
Thank you.
And then, secondly, in your packet, I included a text my gov information. For the thirteen years that I've been here, I've been relentlessly looking into a system that we can make our residents more aware of what's going on, with street work projects, or drug closures, or an officer, like the gentleman in San Diego, who, you know, locked the doors, we've had an issue with that, or yard waste changes. We do currently have Facebook in place, and this is just a, just an idea. Nothing I'm pushing for or nor like proposing to, but it is something that it moves the town forward. Now, after discussing with this gentleman, we had two Zoom meetings regarding it. It looks like a wonderful program, but initially, his proposal came back twice as much. I explained to him that Tom is really tight on our budget, but this is something that I have always loved to put in place, because I think that's our primary goal, is to have our residents be aware of the concerns of our residents is really why we're all here. And I find that Facebook, while we target some of the audience, we don't get all of the audience. A lot of people don't do newspaper reading anymore. So last minute items like yard waste changes, garbage changes, road work, road closures, things of that nature, it's very difficult to get out there, or like, hey, please don't throw lithium batteries in the garbage, you know, things like that. So I will tell you that initially, he proposed twice as much as that, and then came back and said that they would offer us a flagship account, which basically would mean that if we liked the product, they would send potential clients our way to answer questions to let them know that it's a good system. So, not proposing it. I would like it in place, I think it would be important for our residents, it's not that costly, and it does move us forward as far as connecting with our residents, but, you know, I thought I'd bring it before y'all.
I think it's something we can, we can consider, I'm not ready to jump yet, because I think we have enough.
That's why it opened on the agenda.
We have enough irons in the fire right now, without starting one more.
It would be very to do. He puts a widget on the website, which allows our residents to go to his website, plug in their information as far as their text number. A lot of people use their texts, they are text capable rather than Facebook capable. As far as paying our bill, same thing, they just put, he would purchase a local number, our residents would text that local number and say, pay my bill, and then bam, it would come up with their website page, or they would then plug in their information, or whatever information we're trying to send out there. I'm looking at users, I'm looking at data up to twenty-five thousand texts, this is just an idea.
Right.
There are other systems, Reach Alert is also one of them, but they're more costly.
So one of my questions I would have is how do we verify that the people still live in Trail Creek?
Well, that can happen with any alerts as well, yeah, and even emails or phone numbers for that matter.
Right, right, I would want to make sure what is, something there to verify who's who, and they're actually, and I know it has to be verified by the person, they have to authorize the texts to come through their phone.
Correct.
But there's gotta be another mechanism in place in case, you know, they need, or the numbers change, or something, because people have a tendency not to update those things.
They absolutely do, and that's why we tend to give fire.
There's that. So it's something I.
Something to think about.
I would say it's something to think about for right now.
Municipality, so everybody knows it's a text my gov situation, so.
Any other opinions on it?
All right.
Anyone else? No? Okay.
I like the idea of it, but you have a lot of fire.
Yeah, I think we did, let's get what we have kind of rolling first between this road and streets, and then the town hall being updated, and some other things going on, and then we can jump on something else, which kind of actually leads me into the other software that we bought not too long ago.
Yes.
For the building permits and ordinance violations.
Yes, we are all there, kind of waiting on Steve to have a moment to sit with me, so that we can go over.
Steve Dick?
Yes.
Okay.
So that we can go over the code enforcement side of the software.
Okay, I will remind him that he needs to get that scheduled with you.
Yeah, that is it.
All right, thank you. Any council comments this evening?
Question, did we, did that get concluded regarding a road issue as a contractor and project? I don't know, is that all done?
JT, sir?
No, because it's a cost benefit, after I've talked to Joe, the total cost was less than two hundred bucks that was involved for what his estimate. So the issue becomes cost benefit of what do you want to do, or he hasn't since, as I understand it, tried to register or do any other work, so. So just, right now, it's, yeah, there isn't anything else going on, other than the amount that was spent, but you've spent a lot more chasing him, and I'm certain you're gonna get in line.
That's fine, so officially, so you close the book on that one?
Okay. And just be mindful of if and when he tries to register again.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Also, was brought up tonight, but something to think about when we officially get going on the remodeling, whoever it's, whoever it's gonna be, I'm assuming they're gonna have a foreman, superintendent, project manager, somebody watching it. So the, we, that's on their side, so somebody on our side needs to be that person too, the contact person, so somebody can go to that person and answer questions, and, and get the questions answered, and go back to them, so they're, they're not held up either. So it's just food for thought.
Are you volunteering for that position?
Well, I can.
You might be.
I think you might be.
But I want, you know, if anybody else is interested in it, or, you know, how do they want to do it, or, because there has to be somebody on our side to be, you know, reviewing what they're doing, make sure there's no shortcuts and all, I guess I've seen some things, but.
So part of that would be Steve Thomas, and part of that would be a council member.
Yeah.
So if you're stepping into that volunteer role as the council member, we could, we could authorize Warren to be the point person on the town hall project for any contractors.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Thanks, Warren.
Thanks, Warren.
Okay, that's fine, I, I just want to bring him up, so, you know, when the time comes, but we don't say, okay, now who's watching?
With your background and experience in, in that arena, I would be comfortable with you.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. All right, thanks, guys.
I don't know if we need to formalize that, but I think that, if you're willing to click on that project, I would love for you to do that, I don't know, I want to speak for everybody else.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, any other council comments? And as of right now, it is eight PM, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, everyone.